Good evening. It is 7:00 PM. We're getting started a little bit late for our Board of Education meeting tonight, Wednesday, March 18th. We are meeting under extraordinary circumstances, and I just want to thank everybody who has come together over the last few days to really put in tons and tons and tons of time and effort to try and do the best thing that we can for our children. And I am sincerely grateful for everybody for doing that and for everybody who has come out tonight or who was watching or has emailed. We appreciate it. We are just going to kind of roll here. Mr. Guarino, can you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ziem?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Gilio is joining us by telephone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Timmons is joining us by telephone? Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Yeah.
Also with us, we have Dr. Mosley?
Yeah.
Dr. McKinnon, McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, and Mr. Donovan.
Okay.
And Ms. Ogara.
Yeah.
And Ms. Bagley.
Marsha Bagley.
Marsha Bagley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Bagley also.
So just to let everybody out in the public know, we are trying to stay some distance away from each other. I noticed that I have extra distance over here, and I'm not going to take it personally. So we've asked some of our staff who've come to sit in the audience just to maintain as much space as possible. I would like to ask the board if we can forego the prayer and the pledge of allegiance tonight, or if we feel that that's a necessary thing to do.
That's fine.
Under these circumstances. Does anyone have any objection?
No.
No? Okay. Dr. Mosley has a presentation for us regarding the district's response to the schools being shut down and the whole COVID-19 situation. Do we have any objection to going ahead and having that at the beginning of the meeting, even though our agenda has it towards the end? I hear no objections. Okay. So I will move over, and we'll do our presentation.
You need the screen, Dr. Mosley?
I do, please.
You need the -- he's yelling at us to do the mic.
All right.
I don't know the -- yeah, I don't know which one is the right one. That means send, right?
This microphone is stuck. Take it away, Dr. Mosley.
First of all, I just want to -- and this isn't -- I'm not trying to self-promote, and I don't really like to -- oh, I'm not even broadcasting.
Yeah, the mic's not working.
No, I'm not broadcasting.
I can't hear him.
Oh, can you unplug and replug?
Oh, okay.
And I'm sorry, you need to be closer. He's talking softly tonight. Thank you.
Well, that didn't work.
It says, it's saying that it's not plugged in. Oh, okay. Want to talk?
All right. Let me just start in talking, so we're not wasting time. Couple things. It's been a kind of a wild two weeks here, so to speak, I'd say, ups and downs in what we've encountered as a district. Part of this is that I became, based on the information that I was reading from the CDC, some information that, you know, you see these talk shows and all these other things, and you quickly realize that we have a problem. And so I believe that it was the right thing to close the schools down when we did. I emailed Heather, and we set up that emergency meeting, and certainly all of us were there. Fast forward a little bit. That Sunday, as you all know, that it was a surprise to me that, and I want to be very clear with the language I'm going to use to you and with you, that the governor made a directive that he was going to institute remote learning for a period up to April 3rd. And so that was a surprise to me. And he also made the directive that the districts had one week to do this remote learning, and that put us all into an interesting situation. And so part of that has to do with, how do we do this? What is it? And so literally, that Sunday, you know, I reached out to some directors, I reached out to other superintendents in terms of what they were doing. Against the backdrop of this, if you don't know it, I'll just share with you. I understand that the North and the South had basketball games as well, and I was very clear that I was not supportive of having our kids play in front of an audience or, you know, having fans there. So that was also canceled during that time as well. So come Monday, which was about, what, three days ago, we have been working on this remote learning. By far, it's not perfect. This is a directive that has many, many moving parts. And basically, what I would just say is that all we're trying to do is that there's a train going down the train tracks, and we're trying to build what I call "train stops." So a couple of things. If I can just kind of point in, and we recognize that we don't know how long school is going to be closed, and I hope this works.
Try it in the box there, not your computer in the desk box.
It's saying my computer's perfect. I'm saying my computer doesn't -- I --
Yes. Jimmy's saying what?
To the left of your laptop.
To the left of your laptop. Try the --
Is it already plugged in, Jamal?
Yeah, we're wondering if it's something in the --
Yeah, the projector's not working. My computer is --
I don't think that projector is working. It's got a red -- the red light is on, and red light should not be on.
Oh, you're right, Mr. Guarino. There is a red light on the projector. I've never seen that before.
It was on Saturday the week ago.
Oh.
Yeah, did that work after the day last week? It didn't work last week, and then it said --
The HDMI trying to --
I don't.
I have jailbreak.
I don't. I don't have a connection.
Please bear with us, everybody. I apologize.
It's an EGA or -- that's an audio. I don't know. Just one. Yes, it's in. I don't want to take too long time, and Dan will be too close to me.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Mosley, is your presentation also on the website?
Well, I just wanted to show the public, but also the board, that I can't -- I just want to acknowledge someone, Stacy Hines, who is -- we created a whole, basically, webpage and design devoted for coronavirus and 19. And we really spent, we took all of the information that we would typically put our hand out and really transfer that online. And understanding that, we recognize that now communication is going to be facilitated online, now that we have to get, push this information out. So our top priority first was to actually make sure that we could facilitate, we say, we canceled school, and then we really wanted to make sure we could feed our community and our kids. And so we wanted to make sure that our lunches were out for our kids, and I can't -- and Dan has done just a fabulous job just organizing the lunches, just making sure that the kids have lunches, but also organizing the faculty to do the lunches. When we get these requests, you get people from the outside, people from different parts and different community members trying to come and do the right thing. But sometimes, the hardest part about this is just organizing the resources. So thank you, Dan, for that. So then we move to the process of making sure that we could facilitate that in a way where we got the kids fed. Now, how do we move to an online or remote learning platform? So I want to acknowledge the teachers who are already there doing it. I know that. You know, I've heard kids share with me that my English teacher's already reached out to me. So this remote learning isn't something new to us. It's new in a sense that we're acquiring it based on the governor's directive, that all of our teachers do that. So our teachers have already been doing it, and Google Docs, you know, Google Classroom, all of those things are already taking place. The difference is that now they're not bringing these documents back into the -- to the -- excuse me, the teacher. So we have started that process. Part of that process is that we've highlighted, if I can just, I wanted to show this, but I can just do this. So what we started here was that if you go to our website, you click on COVID-19, COVID-19 in our schools. Over to the left, what you'll see is student and parents can expect with remote instruction, and Dr. McKinney will talk a little bit about that. Important online learning survey due this Thursday. One of the things that we wanted to do was get a sense of how many kids have Internet access. Also, how many of our kids had devices as well. So partly what Greg and his technology team developed a survey and sent that out. Also, when we talked about access, I really, really want to acknowledge Comcast, and thank you Comcast for that, that they actually opened up all of the hotspots throughout the entire city, so our kids can access the Internet, which is just great. So that, so we kind of put the access piece, we eliminated that. Now the conversation is really about devices and making sure kids can connect. So if you go to our website right now, you'll see expectations for elementary students. You see expectation for secondary students. And then you'll see some questions, and we have Marsha Bagley here, because I really want to make, and I don't want to make it the discussion tonight, but part of this remote learning and the directive coming from the State Department, we have some concerns around the legal requirements for our special education students. Some of our kids cannot learn remotely. Some of our kids have legal documents that we have to fulfill that has nothing to do around remote learning. And it also puts us, this governor directive also puts us in direct contrast, in conflict with IDEA, particularly around equitable education for all kids. We have concerns around how our ELL students are going to do as well. So what, and I'm saying this to the public and to the teachers, what we've come up with, it's imperfect, but it's something that gets us kind of, keeps the train going. We recognize that it's going to take a long time to figure this out and kind of move along, so we're asking for some understanding and some flexibility in terms of how we can move this forward for the district. Understanding a district, this is, this is a very prodigious undertaking. A district this size can't get all of this done, and against the backdrop of a pandemic, against the backdrop of trying to feed kids, we all have families we're trying to provide four to. So we are trying to get this large, you know, I call it like love boat, kind of turned around and doing something different. So it's going to take a lot more time in a week to finally get this finally up and running, but certainly we've put the steps in to do so. So I can stop right there. I just wanted to let you know that we're looking forward to developing this. Partly what we've been doing in terms of, I want to just give the board some, kind of some information on how we're conceptualizing this. We've involved, the union's been meeting with us every day at 8:30 at Central Office. We've also had some principals involved in it. Garth and Donna have been meeting with the principals as well. The directors have been involved in it as well. Special education, Dan, everyone, this has really been a collaborative effort. And, you know, at this point, we're still, we're probably getting on each other's nerves, but we're still kind of pushing this through and making it happen for our kids. So at this point, I would like to say, if you want, I can entertain questions, or I can have Dr. McKinney come up and tell you a little bit about remote learning and how it feels and looks like in the district.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Mosley. I am really, really impressed with our staff the last few days. I mean, the number of people who are spending all of this time developing an online curriculum, plus developing a webpage, plus feeding our students, plus, and volunteering their time for like four hours a day to do that, you know, plus trying to take care of their own families in a time of crisis, it's just so impressive. So thank you to everybody for all of the work that they're doing, and I hope that we'll get there by Friday. Ms. Ziem, you had a question?
Could you just give me an idea? I have, if this is, how much it's costing us for this online learning? There has to be some affiliated cost. Am I wrong, or is the state going to take care of that?
I am, I'm not sure about this. There is a cost, Ms. Ziem. You're absolutely correct. I just can't give it to you right now, because we're still putting it together. But I can certainly email the board and make you aware of it. I don't want to give you a number right here and then come back and the number's higher.
I was as much for myself, but for the public as well, because I don't think they realize, some have had expressed concerns, why didn't we do this before? And I think it goes back to resources, but I didn't want to assume that. I wanted to, so in the future, we'll be fine. Thank you.
Just to piggyback off of that, there's the cost associated with building the webpage and people's time. What other items are, like, what other things are going to go into this pot for the total amount that this is costing us?
I would, and again, I'm not trying to be coy. We're still building this. Part of this has to, we just don't know. So for instance, we're doing an inventory on our laptops. We're doing, so if we need 600 of them, or Chromebooks, excuse me, what does it feel like if we took the remaining Chromebooks and made them available to our kids? Now, doing that, that might get us through this hump, but how do we get, are we going to get all 600 back?
Right.
We don't get the 100, let's say we get 200 of the 600 back, then we're short 400 Chromebooks. So how do we make up that cost? So, you know, there is a financial cost, listen, I'll tell the public and to the board, there is a financial cost to this new initiative, remote learning, there is. There's no free rides here. Part of it is that we have to get the administrators, the teachers set up with some things. There may be some costs that are unanticipated. And I just want to be very, very clear that the language that the state is using, school was, it wasn't canceled until April 3rd. The language that's being used is that the governor implemented remote learning until April 3rd. All right? I don't know, and I'm looking here at Marsha, and she can probably speak to it better than I can. Because of this, there could be some financial and legal costs to special education's kids as well. This hasn't been done. I mean, this is, we haven't, our parents haven't pushed back yet, because we're still new in this process, but I can only imagine. I mean, Marsha's been great in trying to track all of this, tracking in terms of our transportation, tracking in terms of our kids who are medically fragile. I know the state has said, oh, just have those kids come into the school, they can get their services. Well, that's not going to happen. And I'll just be honest with you, because they're medically fragile, you don't want to bring these kids during this time of this pandemic into a school who have compromised immune systems. We also put our teachers at risk as well to do something like that. And so all of these things, when we make directives, have to be thought out. Otherwise, we have issues and problems, and I wouldn't want my own kids to be put in that situation, or even my teachers to be put in that situation. So we have to be careful with that. So to answer your question, I feel like I'm long-winded. I don't have a number. I can only tell you that Marsha's been down in my office the last week, and the last two years or three years, and it's because, nothing bad or negative, it's because there are a lot of unanticipated costs that come to this endeavor.
And can I just, first off, I appreciate very much what you did share with us, because I think the public, and we are a property poor town, we do not, our real estate taxes do not afford us the budget that would afford us all of the luxuries that other towns have. And I just want the public to understand, and if you have an opportunity to speak to your alderman, or the mayor, or anybody that controls the budget, state, national, local, then cry for our needs, because it makes me very sad that we have to beg and have to go to this emergency circumstance to get computers in an age of where computers are a necessity. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Ziem. And to the mayor's credit and to his administration, to the alderman.
Yes.
They have been wonderful. They have called every day, say, how can we be helpful? I mean, they've just been great. I just think we're just in new territory water, so to speak, and I think that, I just want this board to be aware. And I'll get you a final number, trust me, I will, that there is a cost to this.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. So when is this whole thing going to be rolled out and up and ready for our students and the teachers to get on the remote?
We're looking to do this sometime by the end of this week. Dr. McKinney, is that fair enough? And Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah. Wait, you have to have a microphone.
By the end of the week? Is that fair enough?
Schools start Monday.
Okay, so schools --
Okay. Well, just, when are you looking to start this endeavor, to get it up and running? We'll look to start it by Monday.
Monday?
But schools can't start Monday. Didn't the mayor, I mean, didn't the governor say three weeks?
He means the remote learning will start Monday.
Because I, the question is, if April 3rd, things calm down, you know, I'm trying to be, you know, optimistic here. You know, you don't want to roll this out on April 3rd and put all this in there, and our students miss so much. And I guess my question is to Mr. Donovan, is that the cost factor in this, I'm sure you have an area in the budget that you figured out where we're going to take the money from to pay for all this.
Mr. Donovan doesn't look very thrilled to be coming up here. Can you, I'm going to put this up so that there's, oh, there's room down there. Okay.
Called the slide.
There will be some costs, there potentially could be some cost savings also. A lot of it depends on how long it lasts. But any costs we've incurred thus far, we can handle with the existing budget, but there haven't been too many large ones just yet. As Dr. Mosley said, more to come on those. We're just beginning to get them together. We do have insurance on Chromebooks that we didn't used to have, maybe $5,000 or so, but nothing at this point too significant.
And follow-up on here. What happens with the, for a student where we're not using them right now? Do we have to pay them regardless, because of this emergency?
We're in, that is being discussed right now. There's been no official answer, but assuming this continues on for a long period of time, we would probably not pay the full amount. I don't have an answer for you exactly, but that's being considered.
Thank you.
Okay. Other hands? Ms. Gilio or Ms. Timmons, did you have a question or a comment at this time?
I just want to thank everyone who's worked so hard to get to where we are today. And I do not have a comment or a question other than that. Thank you.
Okay. I do have a question about salary, and I don't know if now is the right time to ask it, or if it'll be covered a little bit with Dr. McKinney's, but I'm curious. We had voted last week to make sure we paid everybody through this Friday. What are we doing, like, what are our options for Monday going forward? Because it sounds like we're giving, especially our teachers, quite a bit of work to do.
Okay. As far as, as you mentioned, this week, we're paying everybody. Effective Monday, the way I'm looking at it, this is a virtual, Nashua Virtual Learning Academy.
Okay.
School is in session virtually. Therefore, we're not going to add on more days at the end of the school year, so we have money in the budget to pay for the staff that is expected to be working. So many people have asked the question, yes, if you're a para, for example, you will continue to get paid. If you're a secretary, you'll get paid. So hourly as well as salary, people get paid.
Okay.
But the point that I think's important, if we ask you to do something, you can't simply say, nope, I'm in my house, I'm not going, I'm not, then we'll say, then you need to take a sick or vacation day or something. So there are expectations. It's not simply you work and you do nothing for week after week after week. There may be some people that don't do a whole lot, depending on what their skill level and job is. Every one of our teachers is going to be working with students in a very new way. Potentially, they could be working harder than they did when they had them in front of a classroom. Other people have been, you know, the people working this week that aren't getting paid anymore. So that's sort of where, the way I look at it is, there's money in the budget, we're going until June 19th at this point. We are, school is on, school is not canceled, it's just virtual.
Okay.
Okay?
And then the other question I had follow-up on that is, do we have any idea about April vacation at this point?
That has not been discussed.
Okay. That isn't, I mean, that's the answer. People ask me questions, and then I ask you. That's how this works. All right. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So all hourly workers are getting paid. Is that basically what you're saying?
They'll get paid their regular schedule, yes.
Right. What about like the lunchroom monitors that aren't in school? How is that working?
Yes, they'll get paid. This is, this, what I just said is for the next two weeks.
Okay, for the next --
So it's actually, it'll be three weeks, because there's this week, and then two more weeks, and then we'll look at it as we go on. But for the next two weeks, we're in school, we're going to pay crossing guards, we're going to pay lunch monitors. I doubt we're going to need lunch monitors, but who knows? Crossing guard, if we're having a lunch somewhere, we may ask a crossing guard to go in front of ledge and cross the kids during the lunch bags that we're giving out. We haven't done it, maybe we'll do it.
Okay.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I know that with the emergency orders here, because I know my company's paying me for two weeks, I'm very lucky. I regularly scheduled hours. My husband got laid off, and we had to do the emergency unemployment.
Unemployment?
Yeah, so I didn't know if some of these employees fell into that with the unemployment, with the emergency unemployment. I'm just hoping that this isn't going to go on too long, that people are going to start getting healthy with the warm weather coming and the nice weather, because it's going to take a strain on everybody's family. You know, whether you work for the district or you work for a private company, everybody's taking a hit on this. So I just was curious if anybody was going to fall into the emergency unemployment.
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Maybe this is something that's going to be covered with one of the other presentations. What might someone in a para position or something be asked to do in this time off?
That's probably better for Dr. McKinney or Ms. Fitzpatrick to answer that.
We've had some preliminary conversations.
Is it on?
I feel like it is.
Okay.
This week has been focused on the teachers. Jimmy's not yelling at me, so I feel like it's good. But maybe next week, engaging the pares and doing some rotations, pares coming into buildings and helping out, like 10 at a time, not large group gatherings. Maybe do some clerical work, copying, maybe helping distribute with lunches or distribute materials. But this week has really been focused on the teachers and supporting our faculty. So we have some ideas, but we're not there yet.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I went to four of the schools on Monday. I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, pares, parents, people in the community who didn't even have kids at certain schools. So it's just amazing the number of staff that came out to support our kids. What concerned me was there were not a high number of lunches being given out. I'm looking, I'm thinking, I heard 12, 14. The most I heard at one of the elementary schools was 47, and of that 47, one parent came who had nine children. So I am concerned. I know Manchester is using the buses at the elementary level to drop off breakfast and lunch at the bus stops, along with a two-week packet of work. What are the numbers for students going to the schools to get lunch? Is it increasing?
The numbers have increased every day. Obviously, the first day they were the lowest, they've gotten higher each day. For example, at Led Street today, it was about 160, I think. So the numbers are getting better. They're never going to be great day one. I mean, people don't know about it. But we've done, we've sort of changed the model a number of different times, and we'll probably be changing it again. But at this point, the people working in the kitchens, our food service people that work for us, trained, know how things, where things are and how things work. The United Way and other volunteer groups have taken over as of today. They are now handing out the lunches. So they're doing what they do well, which is bringing volunteers and get out things. We're also with, working with the United Way and the other, call them food groups. They can then take the lunches that aren't used and use them in their own ways, but they will be working with us and providing more things, like 68 hours of hunger and things like that. So I think we're in a really good place when it comes to that. And I think as time goes on, if we're out even longer than two weeks or something, that's -- And I think as time goes on, if we're out even longer than two weeks or something, then I think you're gonna see even more needs, so we're adapting on sort of a day-to-day basis.
Oh, thank you, and I, I do want to say, at one of the schools, I believe it was the guidance counselor, they were looking at, at families, and they were delivering, they were taking their own vehicles and delivering the lunches. My sick.
We don't want to do that, that's the, the public health group does not want that, that's not something, we did that one day at one school, we don't want to do that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Also, are custodians cleaning the desks and the chairs, are they disinfecting all the furniture in every room?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Guarino and then Ms. Bishop?
Yeah, just real, real quick, at Dr. Crisp, they gave away 80 lunches today, and they had to tell 20 other, had 20 others we sent to Elm Street.
Oh, wow.
So, like a hun, the demand was for 100, and they gave about, about 50 or 60 breakfasts. So, and yesterday, Dr. Crisp, they said they did about 60 lunches, so, so now the demand is almost doubled.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino, that's wonderful news, I'm really glad to hear that families are able to take advantage of this. Ms. Bishop?
So, in addition to the food, so kids being at home, one of my concerns is safety, especially with the kiddos that typically need the behavioral support in school, and I'm wondering if we're thinking about using the paras and having them check in and make sure that the parents have the kind of support in managing the behaviors that they're used to?
It looks like, does someone have an answer to that? Ms. Bagley, can you come?
Marcia?
I'm sorry.
I do think we are engaging the guidance counselors, the social workers, the homeschool coordinators, the ELL teachers, you know, part of the planning is a PD piece for teachers, not all the paras have the background to do Google Classroom and support families remotely, so there is a learning curve there, so we would need time to train them up a little bit before we engage in that, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Bagley, because this is an evolving world in special education.
Yeah.
So, we have behavior specialists in the district who we've instructed to check in with families for students who have behavior plans. So, they are supposed to be checking in with families through Google Classroom or other means that we can identify, to help support those families with kids with behavioral issues. Paras, don't, like Dr. McKinney said, don't necessarily have the same level of under, not, I don't want to say understanding, but expertise, thank you, to have those kind of conversations with the parents, we, they are the people on the front line dealing with the students, but the conversations with the parents need to come from the teachers.
And home visits are a different nature than helping out in a classroom, I would say.
I mean, the calling and checking in with the kids, like, you know, like, you know, the queuing that they do in classrooms anyway, continue the queuing at home with their parents.
You're asking if we're having the paras do that? At this point, no, that is not a, part of our plan, but we don't have a full plan yet for all of our paras either.
Right, no, I know, it's, it's a work in motion, my head always goes to safety, so.
And, and speaking of that, Dr. Mosley, you said that the online access survey, you're hoping to have the responses in by tomorrow?
Right.
So then you'll have an idea of how many students need assistance in some other way of doing remote learning?
Ish. I say that only because, you think about, we made an online survey to, to measure how many kids have access to the internet, but you have to have an internet connection to get onto the online survey.
Right.
So it a little bit defeats the purpose, so part of what we're doing is trying to reach out to those families who don't have it, so we do have to do some paper communication with those families, and I understand because we're in this, in this world, communication is a three-pronged approach, it's done in English, it's done in Spanish, it's done in Portuguese, and then we send it out. So we have to, it's just taking a lot longer to get that information, so for instance, when, when we go on Twitter, we can kind of see the families that are responsive to the tweets that are in, like, different languages, so then we piggyback on that, reach out to them, and so, it, it gives us an idea, but certainly what Comcast did today, it really kind of leveled the playing field.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So now it's just a question of just device, and what's the most conducive device? Some kids actually don't want a laptop or Chromebook, they're very comfortable using a phone platform, and that's okay, but certainly, we'll have a better idea, and also, when we give out the laptops, or when that comes to that level, we just want to make sure we do this in a very practical and judicious way, so that we make sure that equity piece is there. To your point, Ms. Bishop, we're, we're in uncharted, uncharted territory, these kids need these services, there's no doubt, but we're asking paras to do what, remotely, you know, communicate remotely, behavioral management programs and, and speech and language, and, you know, just, you know, physical therapy, and that is gonna be, that's something that hasn't been thought out yet, so we're trying to, and also, we have to be understanding of this, and in this environment, when you leave your house in this way, and you go to another person's house, or you're doing this, you just put every, everyone, the student and yourself and in your family at risk, so I'm, at this point, I'm being very honest with you, I'm not sure if we can really do that at this point in this environment.
Are you having conversations with the Department of Education and the Governor's Office about the challenges and barriers that we're discovering as we explore this?
Many.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, Jessica, Ms. Brown, I've just had a brain, brain blank there.
So, I know you have the survey that every should make sure that they go fill out online tonight, if you haven't already. Do you have an estimate, a ballpark figure about how many students you have that are in need of some kind of a device, do you have, I mean, I realize you don't have an exact yet?
Really don't, ish, 400-ish right now, you know, ish, so far, we've gathered, gathered from the survey.
Wow, okay.
But when people say need, what does that mean? Like, do they have a laptop? You know, and also, not every, if you're a family of nine, we're not giving nine laptops out to the students, we'll probably give one or two, well, maybe that's a bad example. A family of one, you know, we're not gonna give all three kids one, like, three laptops, it might be just one per family.
Right. Okay, thank you. Dr. McKinney, you had a presentation as well, did you want to attempt to see if it works? It still has that red light on the projector, so I'm not confident. Do you need your laptop in order to share?
Could I?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? I apologize, Dr. Mosley.
Can I just, for the sake of this, do you need Marcia anymore for the rest of the night?
I think, I, I think, Ms. Bagley, you have answered. I'm happy, I can stay. Yes, I am happy with as much social distancing as people want to do, so if you need to sit somewhere else, or you need to go home, please feel free to do that, and if we have questions that we can't get answered tonight, we will email Dr. Mosley, and then he can tell us the answer.
I just think, part of, I'll tell you why I'm asking, just the genesis of this, like, this goes bad, there's just gotta be people to run the district.
Agreed.
So, if Garth gets sick, I gotta go to Marcia, Marcia gets sick, I gotta go to Garth, so it's like the last survivor, what's that show called? What's that show called, the?
Survivor.
Lone Survivor, you know, in Congress when they get together?
Designated Survivor, okay, so, I want all of you to survive, so if we can, we can use the Lysol that Ms. Brown, you know, generously brought us, I have hand sanitizer, contraband.
I just wanted to add that in the parent attachment that's in the COVID-19 tab for parents, there's a sheet that explains things to parents, but for people that have more than one child, it's important to know that you can access Google Classroom through PS4, Xbox, and Nintendo.
Oh.
So, if you have gaming devices, you can access your Google Classroom through there.
That's fascinating, thank you. This might make, you know, doing our home classroom better. Dr. Mosley, was there anything else that you wanted to add before we go to Dr. McKinney?
No, nope.
Okay, that was a no. Dr. McKinney, did you have more information for us?
I guess I would just share that if parents could visit the website for Expectations for Students, and this is a joint effort with teachers and parents, we all are working on this together, we need parent support to make it happen, part of the understanding from the Department of Ed is parents are gonna be involved with supporting their kids, and, you know, this is new to us, so I would just temper expectations with, we're doing it one step at a time, one day at a time, one week at a time, so be flexible, be understanding, and also, the expectation is, you know, next week probably will be some deployment of technology, and we're getting closer to that, but it's not gonna be, you know, six hours a day with a student and a laptop with a teacher's face on the other end, there is gonna be time for some independent work, some creativity, some storytelling, so I think we just all have to be flexible with, you know, what this looks like, it's not gonna be like higher ed of online learning all the time, there's gonna be some compromises in terms of kids using their Eureka Student Workbook, or writing in their writing journal, or read to self, read to a partner, those sort of things, so it's a learning curve for all of us, we've never done it before, so we're literally going from nothing to something, so I think that part would be very helpful, but going forward, it's not like the district closes, we have new ELL students coming in that have to be assessed and registered, we have a whole new world of special education, 504s are still in play, mandated reporter is still in play, we have all the same rules, policies, procedures, attendance, all of that, and now we're trying to do it in one way, so I would just appreciate everybody understanding that it's gonna be different, and I, I want to compliment the elementary faculty, they've been awesome, and parents have been awesome, the city has been awesome in stepping up and facilitating stuff, so I'm not gonna try to replicate the presentation by not having it, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I do have a question about parent involvement and the expectations for families and supporting their children's academics. Now, I imagine there's a, a range, you know, from kindergarten and first grade, all the way up to, you know, seniors and high school, there's naturally less parent involvement, but I'm thinking about, you know, selfishly, I have a fourth grader and a middle schooler, so what is the expectation for parent involvement for various age groups? And I guess then the piggyback is, what about our children who are home with parents who are working from home, or home with parents who maybe have multiple jobs, that they can't work from home, and like, kids who have less parent availability to, to, to do that academic support? So, I guess it's two questions.
So I'll just speak to the elementary piece, and I'll refer to Donna for the expectations, but at the elementary level, a fourth grade student would expect, and a parent?
It doesn't have to be fourth grade, just general, okay?
K through 5, you'll get an email from your parents' teacher on Monday outlining the week, teachers are kind of following their regular classroom schedule, so they'll assign work, they'll have office hours in the morning, office hours in the afternoon, they'll be touching base with students through Google Classroom, parents can contact them for questions, there certainly will still hear from their art, music, PE, computer teachers as well, just like a regular, trying to keep everything predictable, routine-oriented, keeping to the schedules. Our guidance counselors are working to support kids with their anxiety and kind of dealing with all of this, and you're right, we do have to make some accommodations to help families that have competing work schedules, or three or four kids with one device, you know, we're gonna have to work to figure that out, that's why we're kind of going a week at a time.
Right, so is the.
Learn as we go.
Is the expectation that our students will be working on schoolwork for, like, their normal six-hour day?
So the, the way we framed it is, keep it simple, keep it to the routines they already have, keep the guidelines in place that are in the student handbook for student work, independent work, and it won't be the same, we just can't do it the same, so I would scale down expectations and keep it to what kids can do. Teachers do have to document their weekly email as their accountability and their lesson plan, and there is supposed to be an assessment every day by law, so, you know, parents, we may need your help of, take a picture of that, sign a note for a kid, use the student workbook, exit slips, summative, formative, because we do have to assess the learning that's going on. Please understand it will be some paper stuff, it could be a hybrid, or it could be on, online, so we're kind of covering all our bases there, but teachers do need some accountability in terms of assessing the day.
Who made that law?
People not in this room.
People in Concord.
That's nuts. Sorry, that was a really, like, off-the-cuff moment, I apologize.
I was hoping to show you that, because in the emergency rule, it says that the academic work will be equivalent to the rigor and effort of a regular classroom, and that there will be an assessment each and every day, so that definitely was something that was challenging to the teachers, but we've kind of framed it to do what you usually do, you know, take a picture of your reading to a family member, or you wrote in your writing journal, or your Eureka materials, those all are still acceptable forms, but we're not doing, you know, six hours of online quizzes and summative tests, it just can't look like that, because I think we're all juggling multiple things in the household, and everybody's going a little stir-crazy, so we're just trying to make it work.
Okay. Ms. Seem, you had your hand up.
Just a quick question, I've, I've heard a lot of people say that it's, that there's been a concern for parents who have to go to work, who didn't lose their jobs, for babysitting, has that been an issue?
I'm hearing mm-hms from the audience, but it sounds like we don't have an official answer right now.
I don't have a comment right now on that, I, it's just been, I.
Overwhelming.
Adam, if he has any information, I don't have any information that's accurate to report out on that matter.
Okay. All right, Ms. Bishop?
So as one of those parents who is working full-time, and I show up at meetings every once in a while, and I will be hoping the house doesn't burn down, if my kids don't do something, and I can't track what they've done for the day, is it considered an absence? Is it reflected on the teachers? Because it is certainly my choice to not be super awesome about being at home, because I have to pay bills. But is there?
We understand, and again, the guidance from the Department of Ed is, we're, at the elementary level, we're asking for parents' help, so you get the work for the week, and we're keeping the same structures in place, if your kid's gonna be absent that day, call the school and report it as an absence. We'll be remotely dialing in and checking that voicemail and making the attendance, because we kind of do it that way already, that's the way we're gonna keep it, and then even if kids are not doing their work, Monday, Tuesday, if they can complete the work for the course of the week, we'll still document that learning, there is gonna be a point where we come together and try to make all this whole in terms of looking at the assessments, monitoring attendance, and then giving kids credit, so.
But it's not a reflection on the teachers, like, that's, that's me, that, they're fine.
We're all fine, yes, it's not a reflection on the parent or the teacher, we're just trying to make do with what the setup is, but I don't know if Ms. Fitzpatrick wants to speak to the secondary piece like you asked.
I, would you like your question now?
It's an attendance-based question.
Okay.
So, in a scenario that it's kind of the opposite, maybe you've got like a family that's really hardcore with their support team, and they're done with their weekly work by Wednesday, are there assignments? Can they chill for a bit?
What was the last part, I'm sorry?
Can they back off and wait for the next week's assignments, or do they have to still check in every day and do something, prove that they've read a book for 30 minutes or something like that?
You know, I think we all need to be a little flexible, I would engage the classroom teacher during office hours and say, you know, I've kind of completed this work, what do you recommend for the next step? You know, I don't think, you know, our, my communication to teachers was, you know, I do not want to see death by packet going out by Friday, and people stressing out over the next week, just trying to complete and get everything done by Friday, there has to be a happy medium, and I told them, keep it simple, keep it to things we know, and try to keep it to 20, 30 minutes, and if you feel like your kid is flying ahead and you want some more work, contact the teacher, if you're saying, we all need a little break, fine, contact the classroom teacher, this is all new to us, so we rely on each other to kind of get through.
Okay. All right. Ms. Oden, did you need your question before Ms. Fitzpatrick?
No.
No, I can wait. Okay, so remind me, you'll be the first.
At the middle and high school level, the teachers are all gonna be using Google Classroom, I had my administrators survey the teachers, because my belief was based on my knowledge that most teachers are already using Google Classroom, and that turned out to be true, so what we've done, there's a PowerPoint that was sent out to high school and middle school in the staff tab, and for the people that are not as secure, we have links to tutorials for them, we also ask them to reach out to their colleagues, and we've offered one-to-one training for people that are not doing it, but it's a very, very small amount of people that are doing, haven't engaged in Google Classroom already, so we feel confident we're gonna be able to do that. The teachers are gonna be going in. The teachers are going to be going in and communicating with students, doing work through there. They're going to have office hours for parents to call. So in the situation where maybe kids are getting the work done much more quickly, they can communicate to the teacher, ask for possible enrichment activities. But I also want to let you know that we have, as an educational community, been getting tons of emails. All of these places that you generally have to pay for have opened up their platforms for free use for anybody.
Oh, how wonderful.
And so if parents are looking for additional things for their students, there's a lot of free, quality material out there they can access free, which they couldn't be for now. So I would encourage folks, if you're looking for more enrichment activities, to go surfing for educational websites, and they'll find there's a lot there for them to enrich if their kids are overachievers.
Okay. All right. Ms. Oden.
On what Ms. Fitzpatrick just said, can we send out a list of maybe 25, 30 websites so, so parents don't have to search for it? You know, I know there are some that are really good that we've used in the school, and because of cost, we've eliminated them.
Yes, and, and that's actually something, once we get rolling, I've already mentioned it to Stacy to post it on the parent page. But as Dr. McKinney said, we're really concentrating on getting the teachers up and running. And since I have the mic, I just want to say how grateful and privileged I feel to work with my secondary administrators and my middle school coaches. They have been amazing. And the amount of work that's been done over the last few days to get us ready to go, I just want to publicly acknowledge what a wonderful group of people they are.
Thank you. That's, I'm very impressed with, with the amount of work that the district has done. And to your point about the educational websites, I believe that the Intu already has posted that on their Facebook page. So if people are looking, that's one place to go. Okay. Any?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a couple for Dr. McKinney. In the expectations for elementary students, I noticed K through 2, there's a sentence that says, additional work pickup and drop-off times will be evaluated and announced on a regular basis. So students can come in and pick up work? Are there going to be packets of work for them? I know Manchester is doing that in two-week packets, and so is Milford. Are we having something like that?
There may be. We're working on that part. The initial release of information for student pickup will probably be Friday. They can get their materials and medications, things like that. But there may be another opportunity to drop off materials and then pick it up. But we're not there yet. We're just trying to get through the first week, but there may be some exchange. Or, you know, we, some of the largest schools have said, can we engage the bus company and do something like is being done in Manchester? Because bigger schools, Maine, Dunsable, Charlotte, bicentennial traffic flow. But, you know, so far, we've done small group meetings with faculty. It's gone very well. We're trying to limit for parent pickup, you know, maybe a classroom at a time, and doing drive-through and passing out materials. So we're kind of going a day and a week at a time.
Okay, thank you. My final question is, I know the state has required an 80% participation rate at one point, and I have heard it has been dropped to 50. 50% participation?
No, ma'am.
No?
In the emergency rule, that part has been striked out. I can send you that, but it, it doesn't apply during this time.
Okay.
So we don't have to get back so many in order for it to be considered a school week?
I don't really know what the answer's going to be, but I would say that's why that assessment piece and documentation for teachers is important. If we're asked to present, you know, what happened during these weeks, we can validate. Our teachers prepped and delivered information, and our students did the work. So, you know, that's kind of the expectation. But, you know, hopefully this counts as school days, and we're going to be through everything on, just fine. But who knows if it's going to go longer? So I would just keep it as simple as the weekly emails matter, the lesson plans, and the assessment of student work. But right now, that, the emergency rule is kind of different than the previous rule, which I think you're referring to.
And just to clarify, middle school and high school, the expectation is that they'll log in every day and they'll be communicating with their teacher in Google Classroom on a daily basis. I just don't want to confuse it with elementary, which is a different format.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
This is actually a comment. I just wanted to assure, this kind of an assurance to parents. I have a middle schooler, and I'm assuming it even is more expansive in high school. They are so competent in Google Classroom. They're more competent using the Google Docs and Sheets than I am, and I'm pretty proficient in it. My kids show me things once in a while that I go, I didn't know it could do that. But honestly, the Google Classroom, all of their teachers, their literacy, their writing, their social studies teachers, have all been using that all year. So the transition should not be very difficult for those types of classes for, at least middle school, and I'm, my assumption is the high school students as well.
You're correct. Okay, great. All right. So at this point, I think that was our COVID-19 update, which was at the end of our agenda. So to go back to the beginning of our agenda, I'm sorry, Ms. Bagley?
Yes. I was wrong. We have one more thing.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that because we have an emergency rule, it is not voiding our timelines in special ed. So we are trying to be very creative in ways to evaluate students, hold meetings for parents who may not have any means to communicate with us outside of coming into the building. I know somebody at the state suggested that our students come to our buildings to receive services, and I do not support that for many reasons. But mostly because it's even more discriminatory in my eyes, that a student is allowed into our buildings because they have a disability. And that's pretty concerning.
Ms. Brown?
Do you have a solution?
No. Quite honestly, I mean, we found out about this, this rule, or this mandate on Sunday at 1:00. And I think collectively, my team and I have probably gotten six hours of sleep since then. Because we have been working around the clock trying to get this information. Our staff just learned our plan today, and there's significant concerns, and I share those concerns. So I just want everybody to be aware that this could mean a lot of complications for special education. I'm hoping that the State Board of Education listens to people who are rallying for them to stop the timelines in the process, but at this point, that's not happening.
Okay. Ken, go ahead.
Do you feel like that is your biggest challenge right now? Your biggest hurdle that you've got going on is meeting the timelines for people's, for different students' IEPs? Is that, is that your biggest challenge that you're trying to reach? Or do you feel like it's, I mean, obviously, you're, everybody wants to make sure those students are getting their needs addressed every day?
So I think we have two really big challenges in special education. One is that our students, some of them can log into Google Classroom and can participate online. Some of our students don't have the capabilities of turning on a computer. Some of our students don't have the physical ability to get themselves into a seat to sit in front of a computer. So we are planning in special ed for ages 3 to 21 with students who have vastly different abilities. So making sure that we meet all of those needs virtually is huge undertaking, to say the least. Our other problem is continuing to follow our timelines and not face potential due process or compensatory education. So I can tell you that Massachusetts State Department of Education has adopted a very different understanding of this crisis, and has stopped all education, not just special education, but all education, and is only saying to provide enrichment services. And that's based on the information that we've gotten from our out-of-district schools in Massachusetts. Because now what's happened is some of our out-of-district schools in Massachusetts have closed. And so our students who are attending those programs, we are now responsible for implementing their IEPs and providing services for students.
That we can't.
Don't know. I mean, that haven't been in our, in our buildings for some time, some of them for 10-plus years. The same is for charter schools. So students who are in charter schools, we have to continue to provide those services as well virtually.
That sounds like a very large challenge. Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
I have a question for Mr. Donovan. If we're paying out-of-district tuition, which is expensive, are we getting, will we get a rebate from those schools because we now have taken on the responsibility?
At, at this point, we discussed this the other day. If the schools are not, we typically pay a daily rate. So if they're not, the child isn't there getting the services, in my opinion, we're not going to pay the school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At least there's a win.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bagley. Okay. So, thank you, everybody, for giving us that update. I know that many, many of our parents and staff had a lot of questions, and hopefully we were able to get those answers for them this evening. If not, I encourage people to email the board at boe@nashua.edu, and we will forward your questions on to the superintendent's office, who will get them where they need to go to get answered. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Sorry, I have one more. Dr. Mosley, what are we doing to try to contact and work with our ELL students? I know that's challenging.
Sure. Well, as I said earlier, we've sent out communication. Unfortunately, Yadi was actually planning an event for our ELL families to come together. So we've been working with our homeless liaison coordinator, using resources that we already have contact with families already, we just do. Yadi worked in the district before, so she's reached out to them. We've, we partnered with, and I'll defer to Donna and Garth on how we're delivering their services. It's not ideal, but we've actually made a special, I'd say, not modification, but consideration as we move to this online learning platform. It is going to be a challenge for them, and it speaks to what Marsha Bagley said around equity. I'm not here, I'm not going to tell you that online learning is kind of going to give them the same amount of equitable instruction that they would have received had they attended school. So we're reaching out to them, but at the same time, we're reaching out to them for other matters as well.
Do we have translators for that? Because on our website, we have Spanish, Portuguese, and, oh, English.
English. So we do, we do have that.
Okay.
I think what, again, this is all-new territory for us. I got an email from a parent today, and the parent was being very helpful. But even my video message, the parent said, well, could you please have a deaf interpreter there? Because we'd like to appreciate that part of the video, too. So this is ever-evolving. And to Ms. Ziem, your point, I, we have to call in a deaf interpreter to help us with the video. So I don't know how much that's going to cost, but we do have to provide that level of service. So it's always evolving, and certainly it's a consideration. We're working with Bob Chopra and Yanni. Good.
At the middle and high school, the teachers have been instructed to put the ELL teachers on their classroom so that they can support the kids. And also for the special education students who can participate in a regular ed classroom with support, the case managers are also been put in the classroom so that the special education teacher and the ELL teacher can support those students within the Google Classroom platform. So that's one of the ways that we're working on it. But we do recognize that there are families out there who may not realize that we're offering help through Chromebooks, and that's where the phone calls are coming in, and we're utilizing staff to help with those phone calls, to reach out to those families that we may not have reached yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And just to Ms. Oden's point, if you go to our website, it says, if you see the two people there, it says A, and then there's another kind of a star there. You click there, and then you can click on the language, and you can have any language you want there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Considering we started from scratch with this, I think we've made tremendous progress. There's still progress to be made, but I commend all of our staff for the hard work that has gone into this. This is a huge undertaking in a very short period of time. So thank you to everybody.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. All right. So it is now 8:05. We are still in our kind of emergency situation globally, I would say. I would like to limit the amount of time that everybody's out here, not social distancing. So I propose that as we go through the agenda, that we change the rules and eliminate discussion. I suggest that we simply make a motion, either yes, no, or table it if we need to discuss it further, while we're all trying to not be in the building and around people. Does anyone else, would anyone like to make a motion to that effect? Or am I out here by myself?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rest of the agenda for another time. I think we need to respect the social distancing issues that are going on.
Okay. Is there a second?
For the paying of the invoices, I think we need to get that done.
And do we just want to do the consent agenda? That would be easy enough.
Okay. So we have a motion with no second to suspend the entire agenda except for the finance part. And then we have a suggestion that we only do the consent agenda. And then, Ms. Johnson, you look like you had something to say.
No, not really. The only thing, if we were going to do the agenda, I just have one comment on one thing. But if we want to suspend the whole agenda and just do the consent, like Mrs. Ziem talked about, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right. So the consent agenda does not include paying any of these things on finance?
Is there a motion? Can I, we suspend the motions on the floor? I'd like to make a new motion.
Wait, Mr. Donovan said he would like things to get paid? Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I move that we do the consent agenda and the finance and operations agenda only, and move on.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. I would like.
I would like to make another motion.
One motion at a time.
I'm sorry.
Unless you want to amend this particular motion.
I want to amend the motion to add on that I do not want to eliminate discussion.
Was that the?
Okay. So it's your own motion, so let's call it a friendly amendment. So your motion is that we do the consent agenda, the committee on finance and operations agenda, and that we allow discussion of all of those items, and we don't do anything else.
If there's discussion for it, I don't want to give up the right to discuss something.
Okay. And Ms. Ziem, that is your second?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to amend that to also allow individuals who came out to speak. So that we also allow public comments.
I'll second.
From the two public individuals who are here. Okay? So Ms. Oden has seconded my amendment. So here's how this works.
I amend your amendment?
No.
Yes?
I would like to amend to allow two minutes only for public comment.
I will take a friendly amendment. Brief public comments, two minutes. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Do we need to do anything on human resources for anybody that, or can that be held to the next meeting?
Ms. O'Gara, do you have anything that is time-sensitive that requires approval this evening?
I think, I think it's okay if you want to hold it to the next meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment part first? Okay. So on the amendment to the motion, and the amendment is to allow for two minutes of public comments, two minutes a person of public comments. Mr. Guarino, can you call the roll since we have people on the phone?
Okay.
So yes means limit to two minutes of public comments, no. So yes means limit to two minutes of public comments, no means no public comments. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion, which was to do the consent agenda, the finance and operations agenda, and now public comments? I see no other discussion. I don't hear anything from our phone people. So, Mr. Guarino, could you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. So, on the consent agenda, do we have a, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dottie.
I, I would like to remove the Committee on Finance and Operations, the recommendation to approve painting, a mural on the side of the Elm Street Middle School, funding to be provided by a city escrow account. I would like to table that.
Okay, we're not there. Wait, wait one second.
This is consent.
Consent agenda, up above. Which is the meeting minutes, mostly.
I thought it was in there. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And communications. So meeting, consent agenda is meeting minutes and communications.
But, but our minutes are in there.
So you would like to remove the, do you want to remove the portion of the minutes?
That's okay. No, I'll wait until we get to the committee. Thank you.
Okay. That's okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve or not approve.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
You choose, Mr. Guarino, between Ms. Bishop and Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none?
On the motion to accept the consent agenda, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. So now we are not going to do communications outside the consent agenda. We will do a public question comment period regarding items on this agenda, two minutes. How can you do?
We're not doing finance.
Yes. I have my timer here. I don't know. I don't have like a little, I have nothing. I didn't want to touch anything.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Deb Howes. I'm vice president of the Nashua Teachers Union and a teacher at Amherst Street School. I'm trying to be brief here. I'm going to echo a lot of what was said earlier. Dr. Mosley was talking about the extraordinary times we're in that require us to have flexibility and understanding with our schools closed for this week and moving to remote learning by order of the State Department of Education. And, you know, what remote learning looks like, how we've done so much work just in the past few days to try and get that up and running. I am really here speaking on behalf of the special education teachers and students. It's a huge concern for many of us. We want everyone to stay safe. The teachers, the students, all of their families. The idea that some students will be, you know, might come into school to receive services, that idea that the Commissioner of Education was talking about on Sunday, that appalls me. You are putting some of the most likely to be dangerously ill students in danger. You're putting, you know, teachers and their families in danger by continuing to come into school to provide services. So that's obviously not an idea that makes sense in these times. The federal IDAEA laws are inflexible in their timelines. And what I would urge this board to do is consider writing a letter to our New Hampshire Board of Education, asking them to advocate for flexibility from these timelines, so that during this emergency, we don't have to put our teachers and students in the situation of doing evaluations and reevaluations, that just they suspend it for the duration of the emergency. And the other thing I would urge you to do is also request that the New Hampshire Board of Education revisit that part of their order that says we will be assessing work daily if we are sending home packets of paper in kindergarten through second grade. I don't want those papers back daily. Or even if we pick them up once a week, I'm not sure you want to be touching them. Yeah, again, we don't know who's sick or who's been exposed. Daily is an awful, hard task on everyone, on the families, on the teachers, and you're spreading germs. So weekly might be a more doable task. We don't want to say we don't care about the learning, but right now, we want to help everyone get through this and have some kind of education going on, keep in touch with our students, and have routines and something meaningful going on so that education continues. That's really our goal.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much, Ms. Howes.
I will follow up with an email, because I may have rambled a little bit, but-
Okay.
Okay.
I know this is not normal, but, Dr. Mosley, is there a way to let the board know if, if there are some challenges in doing those daily assessments? Because I'm just thinking about, especially at the younger ages where you have packets, like, not all of our families can go to the school every day. Like, that's just insane. Because I want to write letters.
Here's the thing. I'm going to just be very honest with you and lay it out. And we have a pandemic going on right now. When you touch the paper, right, and then the family that's quarantined for two weeks, they get the paper that could be affected by the coronavirus. That family now is, their quarantine is over, and they got to start another 15-day cycle. You feel what I'm throwing, right?
Yeah.
So, so you're just in my sight vision, that's all. But part of that is, but part of that is that, so passing out paper, that can be a safety issue, particularly when you're going around the city passing this out. So we have to be very careful about, in this environment, what we're talking about, until we know more about this, about what we're dealing with, about the passing of paper. It may seem innocent about two, two years ago, but that can be a real challenge. The second piece, once we get the paper back, we grade it, do we give it back? How do we translate it back? I don't, these are uncharted territory. So I would, we don't really have a plan for that. Would be happy to give the paper back, but we don't, there's been some discussion and some research around how that particular, these items can be, have an impact on family health.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just piggyback on you, please?
Yeah.
What about the timeline? Writing a letter is, would it be more effective for somebody to call the President of the New Hampshire Board of Education? It would certainly be a lot faster, and it seems to me that time is very relevant. So I would, it sounds like a great idea, and thank you for bringing it forward, but I would, I would recommend that if we can, we call. We could follow up with the letter, but at least we would expedite it. Thank you.
Yep. And of course, we have senators and congresspeople as well, you know, not to escalate.
We also have a, we also have a state board member from Nashua, Helen Honero.
Oh.
We'll get you her number, too. And Drew Kleins, the Chair of the State School Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That doesn't count for your two minutes.
Good. I will also be timing my own two minutes over here on my special clock, which runs very slow. My name is Adam Marku. I'm President of the Nashua Teachers Union. I live at Forge Alori Lane. Tonight, I am a dad with two public school children living in my house with my office there now. And in the three days, I can tell you that it's very different than vacation, because we're at home, there's nowhere to go. This, what is happening to all of our teachers and staff district-wide, statewide, nationwide, is exact reason, an example why direct instruction is so important. We have spent since Sunday looking at ways to educate our students. The fact that special ed is in the situation they are in has nothing to do with our special ed staff, the directors, our teachers, our providers, our speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, social, whatever, whoever's working with those children. We are concerned about timelines and the typical rules because we are not in typical times. I don't know who to say that to other than to you. We will advocate to the National, the State Board, the National Department of Education. We have reached out to the American Federation of Teachers National, because we are not the only district in trouble with this. And I say in trouble because I don't know how we're going to do it safely without our teachers and special ed staff having complete breakdowns. It's not doable. And we're not saying that because we're lazy, because we don't want to service these kids, because we don't want them to have the best education they have. I don't know how we do it. And if someone has a magic answer for us, I'm happy to have it and work with you. This is uncharted territory, so we ask everyone in the public, please, be patient with us, but more importantly, be patient with your kids. They're accustomed to coming to school for six or seven hours a day and working with their classmates and their teachers and the paras, and having lunch in the cafeteria, and going outside for recess, or passing in the hallways and talking about random things when they have their ear things in. And I don't know how they talk and do that at the same time, but we are in different times. Yeah, we have people that are using Google Classroom, and we have some that would still use an overhead projector if we let them. This is not going to be easy for anyone as we transition, because it's new. We don't like new things. We get used to them, and we adapt, and we will do our best, and people have been working their hardest. But we have teachers and staff with compromised immune systems. We have staff taking care of their families with compromised immune systems, young children. We have pregnant teachers. We have husbands whose wives are pregnant. And as Dr. Mosley said, the more exposure we have, the more we are part of this problem than not recognizing social distancing. Someone said, "We've never seen teachers work so hard." And I think our teachers work hard and our staff work hard all the time, but they're right. Teachers have worked harder these last two days because their kids are home, too. How can we manage teaching kids electronically when I have my three kids running amok in the background? And I love my kids, and I'm glad I can spend time with them and be home with them, and they're not out in what's happening. But that needs to be a consideration of all of this, too, because a lot of our teachers and staff work in this district because their kids are in this district and they believe in this district. And when we close the district and we still work, that can be a challenge. And no one's complaining about working. Everyone, everyone just found out when Mr. Donovan spoke that the, everyone's being paid through April 3rd. There are people crying, ecstatic, because, none, they don't have to worry about paying their bills, and, two, they don't have to worry about where the money's going to come to pay for their insurance. Most of our paras and hourly people cover their insurance. And I know the district could have said no, and they could have said, "Well, you didn't, you're not coming to work, we're not going to pay you." But I can't be thankful enough to the school board, to the central office administration, including the superintendent, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Donovan, Ms. O'Gara, Mrs. Bagley, Stacy Hines, Bob Chopuck, Greg Rodriguez in IT, for the work that I have been part of since this started at 1:00 Sunday afternoon. It has been a collaboration. It's not perfect. We don't agree on everything, but the children and the people in this build, in our district have been at the forefront from the start. You can't forget to thank Dahlia Dagel from Food Service and all the women, men that work for her. And with Dan, to get this food lunch thing pulled together the way they did, they, I went in on Monday, and they had people making sandwiches all over the place and feeding kids, to the teachers, paras, food service workers, secretaries, and random people that said, "Can we come and help?" To the people that have reached out, it has been an unbelievable, unbelievable outpouring of support from my membership, from random people in the community, in that to have the United Way pick up right where the NTU left off with helping get that food out to the schools, and to expand the way they did from Monday having six locations to 12 today, or 13, I think, no. The volunteers, the community supporting N68 Hours of Hunger, they just got $25,000 worth of donations in 48 hours from this community. To my executive board and my membership, who has been behind me from the beginning of this, this has not been easy for any of us, because it's out of our norm. We like routine, and we like structure, and we don't have any of that. We would give everything to be back in front of our kids tomorrow morning at the 17 buildings. Mrs. Oden asked about resources. Every resource that we have found from our members, whether they're free or things we've already used, is posted on the Nashua Teachers Union webpage, nashua tu.org. It's the second link on the left. I have not vetted a single one, but Scholastic's on there, and they've dropped their paywall. Newzella's on there, they've dropped their paywall. Most of these things, there's no paywalls. There's some great things on there. We talked about storytime. My favorite part of teaching was read-aloud time. We're doing storytime live on the NTU Facebook page at 2:00 every, every day. I sit in my living room, and we're going to start rotating with my, today, my daughter sat on my lap, and we read stories out loud on Facebook Live. We have plans to do puppet shows and other things to try to help break up the day for parents, because it helps break up the day for us, too. Deb covered sped. And I'm glad Dr. McKinney said we need to keep it simple and keep it basic, because the expectations for a district like ours cannot be the same for other districts when they have more money than they know what to do with and no free and reduced lunch kids. Like, we're not on a same playing field, and that's not fair. So expectations need to be based on what we can do, and we will do our best to work for our students and each other. And I know I'm well over two minutes, but according to my timer, I have three seconds left, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marku. And I appreciate that you've mentioned all of the people, not all the people, many of the people who have been involved. And I just want to do a special shout-out to 68 Hours of Hunger. They've been amazing to help. Okay, onward. We are skipping right ahead to the Committee on Finance and Operations. Now, Ms. Oden, you had said that you wanted to table or withdraw the mural on Elm Street.
I, I think at this point, we need to table it. My understanding is that some representatives from the city were supposed to come and speak to this. It's $50,000 coming in, out of an escrow account, and maybe they're feeling maybe that money could be spent on something else. I don't know.
Okay.
But I think it, we ought to table that.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'm going to call that a motion to table.
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion on your motion to table?
I want to say something. I'm glad Mrs. Oden decided to table it, because I was, at the meeting, I was against it, the $50,000, and more so now. I agree with Ms. Oden. I think there's other things we could do with $50,000 in this community right now than to have a mural. And also, my concern is, well, now what's going to happen with the building?
Right.
You know, we're building a new middle school, so I just feel that $50,000 is a lot in lieu of everything that's going on in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right. When you're ready, Mr. Guarino, if you could call the roll on the motion to table.
I have a question on, on this. Do you, do you plan on bringing this back, or is it, the reason why we're tabling it is because we haven't heard from the city? Are they withdrew the money? I'm not sure why we're, why we're tabling it.
And nobody, nobody is here at this point to talk about it. And quite frankly, I went by Elm Street today, and I worry about the neighbors that face that wall, that they want to put this large mural on, that we have no control over what's up there. And I think the city needs to run this by the people. Most of the murals in the city are in places where you drive by, but this mural on the side of the wall at Elm Street faces single-family homes, apartments, and it certainly would be a shocking view to walk out your door, especially if it was something you weren't real excited about. And let me say, it's not $50,000 for this one mural, it's $50,000 for four separate murals that are going up within the city. They looked at many sites. This happened to be one of them, and the more I look at it, I think probably it's not as appropriate as I think a site should be for a mural.
So we're going to wait for more information from the city regarding abutters, it sounds like, at least?
I, I would recommend that they look at the abutters, looking after driving by. And when you look at Elm Street, where they want to paint, we have, I think there's six arched windows that are bricked in. There are protrusions on the walls, on either side of the wall, so probably challenging. And as I said at the meeting that night, I was disappointed that there was nothing that would be educational for our high school students. They were going to invite the middle school students out to look at it and ask a few questions, but we have a very sophisticated and robust art program at each of our high schools. And I thought if somebody is going to use one of our schools to do something of this size, that our students could gain some information about how to size a mural to a certain space and the types of paint. I thought it could have been educational for our kids, but I think there's more to it, and I'm, I'm guessing that with what's going on today, that maybe the mayor is feeling that $50,000 might be needed somewhere else. I don't know, I'm just assuming that.
Okay, so I suppose we'll find out later. Mr. Guarino?
Okay, on the motion to table the painting mural, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
All right, thank you. Next.
A motion to approve, I'm going to read them all together and do it as one, one large motion. Is that appropriate? Okay.
Wait, are they all coming from our accounts, or are some coming from someplace else?
Well, we have some coming from grants.
I would suggest that we separate the motions to make, to line up the funding source. Does that make sense? So if it's PTO-funded, separate that from our accounts, separate that from city accounts.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan's giving me nodding.
Okay, thank you. The first one is to recommend the approval of the Main Dunstable Playground Project funded by Main Dunstable PTO.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson.
Can I just say, they gave, you all have the, the plans. They raised $100,000 for this playground, and it was just fascinating. I'm sure you can see their musical instruments on it. It has a great variety of things for every student in their school, so congratulations to them. I recommend it highly. Passing.
The, the handout they showed, it's beautiful, beautiful plans and such generosity from the families in that area. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the playground building? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Guarino?
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, I'm going to make the next two out of the same motion because it's from the same account. Is that appropriate, Mr. Donovan? Okay. I recommend to approve the high school wireless upgrade project with RTM for $216,667 from account 91, decimal point one, decimal point 992225-71221. And I recommend to approve the network infrastructure project with RTM for $351,644 from account, the same account, 91, decimal point one, decimal point 992225-71221.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ziem.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson, did you have a comment?
I was just going to second it.
Okay. Did anyone have a comment or question? Seeing none. Ms. Guarino?
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. I recommend the approval of the purchase of a 2021 Ford Box Van for $45,728, and to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-350 truck for $46,039, both coming from the city capital reserve fund.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Bishop. Ms. Ziem?
Can I just ask, Mrs. Oden, I'm assuming that you, that for all three of these vehicles, you looked at the ages and the mileage, and these were not, thank you.
And they had, they had other quotes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? No? Mr. Guarino?
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Recommend to approve the purchase of a 2020 Ford Transit 350 van for $30,995 for the Bruntwood Program funded by the IDEA grant.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Bishop. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? All right, then whenever you're ready, Mr. Guarino.
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Recommend to accept and place on file the fiscal year 20 February 2020 report as presented and accepted at the March 10, 2020 Finance and Operations Meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none. Mr. Guarino, when you're ready.
On the motion, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay.
Did we miss one of the trucks? We got all three.
We got all three.
I'm sorry, I must have been asleep.
No, I did the two coming from the capital reserve fund together.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I got an email from the mayor's office while we were having this meeting, and I know we decided that we should squish the agenda, but I do want to make the board aware of this email. And we all got it, so you guys can read it. But the most important part of it, in my view, for right now, is that the, the mayor has specifically asked, quote, that all meetings that aren't required by state statute, ordinance, or charter should be postponed at this time. So they are asking that we do not have public meetings during this time unless they are absolutely necessary. So with that in mind, yes, Ms. Ziem?
And we didn't, we decided that we were going to try to go cyber anyway, right? So the public will know, or we tried to do it on the phones? No?
I don't know. I don't know if we have the infrastructure, and I think that's an ongoing question. So we can help on that. But the question that I have right now for the board is, we have committee meetings scheduled for this month. So the question is, ought we to have those committee meetings, or ought we to cancel them for the month? The same with board meetings. Our next board meeting is scheduled for April 15th. Ought we keep that on the calendar, or ought we bump it out to May?
I think we need to bump it out.
Well, does anybody know of anything that's critical that we need to do before then?
Before May or before April?
I was curious about the budget, like, the, those committees.
Oh, that's the budget.
We, those are the ones, the only ones that I was concerned about. I don't know what the legal timeline is for when we had to present that to the Board of Aldermen.
So the budget, well, the next meeting we have for the budget is a public hearing, which would require members of the public to come here and speak, which makes me very nervous. The, basically what happens is, we have to send it over to the Aldermen, usually May-ish is when they meet to discuss it, and then they let us know by the beginning of June what they've decided, and then we get the funds at the beginning of July. So we have that, like, little squishy amount of time. I recommend that we push the public hearing out until at least April.
Well, it sounds like we don't have to have public comment. We don't have to.
We are required by law to have a public hearing on the budget. That's different than public comment on the meeting. Ms. Johnson and then Mr. Guarino.
Yeah, what happens is, you have the public hearing on the school budget. Then, once you go through the budget and you do what you have to do, then you present it to the Board of Aldermen. The Board of Aldermen then has scheduled meetings on each department with the, with the departments publicly. Then when they get to the school district, then you go in and discuss your budget with the board. Usually, they, the budget needs to be passed by July. I think it's around the beginning of July, if I remember correctly. But given these circumstances, you don't know. I mean, when I was on the board the first year, I held the budget up to October because, who would think I would do something like that?
No, Ms. Johnson.
Because, not me, because the spending was so high, and we were going on to supplemental budgets in order to fund the city. But that, but given the circumstances right now, I guess the question then becomes, goes back to legal, to find out, when do we have to, what's our timeframe now, given that, you know, meetings might be suspended? I think what we should basically do is just kind of play it by ear right now. Maybe mid-April, come back on a meeting, see how everything is at that point in time, because we don't know. By mid-April, things might have calmed down, and we might be able to have meetings. If not, we can postpone them, as long as we do it within the right-to-know law timeframe, and we schedule it to come back.
Okay.
So could I move that we suspend all meetings until April 1st? Second. Well, we're not back in school till the 3rd.
Yeah.
So why don't we stick to that schedule?
The 3rd is a Monday, and the 1st is a Saturday.
Oh, there's a meeting scheduled on Saturday? That's just, that's weird, then.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Maybe the, it might be a misprint on the schedule.
It's, I don't have my calendar right in front of me. Okay, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. Okay, then I, I amend my motion. I move that we suspend all meetings until at least April 6th, and then reevaluate when the time comes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Would you do, I can ask Tara to look at the April and plug some things in, and then send it back to us. Okay? Any other discussion? Nope? Okay. On the motion to suspend all Board of Education meetings, including committee meetings and regular meetings, until April 6th, Mr. Guarino?
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden? Motion carries nine to zero. Did I call it, Ms. Ziem? Did I call you? I did, okay. I'm sorry, I'm tired.
Okay.
Yes, we all are.
Yes, Ms. Oden?
I'd just like to say, we were supposed to have an HR meeting before, and a lot of the items on that were, it was about hiring coaches. And I know that Ms. Jingeris has spoken to how hard it is to get coaches. So if we could just approve the HR committee, there were, I think there was one resignation on there. I'm just wondering if we could get that business done so that the coaches would know that they were hired and wouldn't go to other districts.
Yeah, we second it.
Okay. So, motion to approve the HR committee recommendations as presented in our packet.
For March, March 18th, okay?
It was seconded.
When it was seconded by, I'm sorry.
Oh, was it you?
Second.
Ms. Ziem?
Okay.
And Ms. Timmons?
And for the, can I, can I just make a?
We need to vote on it.
Let's vote on that. I know, can we make a discussion?
We can have a discussion, but we can't identify people. Okay.
I just wanted to, for the record, state, all the positions are, except for one, are all sports coaches, as you said.
Yep.
So I wanted to confirm.
And one resignation, a retirement, I'm sorry.
Retirement, not a resignation.
Yes, congratulations to the person.
Which have been vetted by Ms. Jingeris.
And thanking for his service.
Yes. Okay. On the motion to approve the HR recommendations, oh, we can't do all in favor. Go ahead.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Wonderful.
Motion to adjourn?
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone seconded that, so just pick someone.
On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Ziem?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. We are adjourned at 8:47.
8:47.
Great. Thank you all so much. Please practice social distancing, stay home if you can, and we'll see you in April.